Making me late, Don. Good evening, I'd like to call the Lakeland Shores City Council Meeting, September 6, 2018, to order. Kim, if you'd take roll call, please.
Councilmember Schroeder. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Bishad.
Here.
Councilmember Kopesky.
Present.
Mayor Zeller.
Here. If you'd join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business is adopting the agenda. Are there any changes or additions that we need to make to the agenda? Seeing none, I'd make a motion that we adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business is the consent agenda. There's three items on there. Approve the July 12, 2018, city council meeting minutes. Approve the monthly claims, which are right here. If anyone would like to see them, I think you also received a report. And then item C, tort liability, city does not waive monetary limits. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is public comments. Is there anyone here with us this evening that would like to comment on anything that's not on the agenda? Any item that you see on the agenda, when we reach that item, that would be the appropriate time to comment on that. But if there's anything not on the agenda that anyone would like to comment on, now is a perfect time for that. No random thoughts? Kim, any written?
Mayor, councilmembers, no.
Okay, excellent. We'll move on. Unfinished and new business. Item A, public hearing, consideration of resolution number 2018-06, which is a conditional use permit application. Bob Lynn, lots 3, 4, and 5, Block 10, Lakeland Shores, Minnesota. Kim, I'm always haunted by this because you and I do this a little different. Would you like me to open and close with a motion, the public hearing?
Mayor Zeller, I would like to hear from your city engineer in terms of kind of overviewing the application and his staff report, and then it would be appropriate at that time to open the public hearing.
That's how we do it different. All right, fair enough. John, would you mind introducing the application?
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, this is probably an application that council is somewhat familiar with, as back in July, council did hear quite a bit of detail. There was a site visit done relating to vacation of some unimproved right-of-way. Council took action on that. The vacation request was granted, and following that approval, now, the applicant is presenting his overall project to construct a small commercial building on the lot, the combined lot, with the vacation included. This conditional use permit is required for uses like this in the business district. The property, again, will access Second Street North, partially, with the driveway partially on the remaining portion of unimproved right-of-way between two residential lots. There's 33 feet of right-of-way there. And the rest of the application is summarized, from an engineering standpoint anyways, in the memo from my office dated August 21, 2018, which hopefully you'll find in your packet. There were a number of items provided for this review, and those are listed in the application, or, I'm sorry, in my memo. And I'll just go over a couple of our comments as they relate to engineering items on this application. The subject property is Zoned D, commercial. Maximum allowed impervious surface coverage is 65 percent, and the proposed impervious coverage is 50 percent, which does comply with this 65 percent maximum. Right now, there are a couple of items, we're going to hit a couple here, that we may require, will require some follow-up. The site plan does not indicate what type of driveway surface is being proposed, but the city's code does require a dustless parking surface of asphalt or concrete material. The reference there is Code Section 151 dot 008K1, capable of supporting emergency or heavy, other heavy vehicles. Item four, there's the proposed driveway is, well, I have 16 feet here. It's either 14 or 16 feet, I think it might be dimensioned two different ways. On the drawing that we have in our packet today, I think it's dimensioned at 14 feet. City code requires commercial driveways to be a minimum of 24 feet wide. So there's a couple of items there we want to maybe come back to as conditions, potential conditions of approval, at least for council to make special note of in any action that's taken. The rain garden shows three separate rain, I'm sorry, the grading plan shows three separate rain garden areas, which brings the site into compliance with respect to stormwater runoff. The project has been reviewed by the WMO as well. And, let's see, this project is exempt from needing a grading permit as long as the grading activities are associated with a valid building permit. So, once they, if they are going to grade before receiving a building permit, they'll need to come back for a grading permit. But, it's my understanding that this all happened concurrently, so grading permit is not anticipated at this time. Steep slopes are not disturbed. Erosion control measures are proposed and should be adequate for the construction. I mentioned the WMO had submitted some comments, so those should be made conditions of approval. Items 11 and 12, now, I believe have been addressed. This has to do with the water service. At the time this memo was written, the proposed water service location was not shown. It has now been added to the drawing that we received for tonight's meeting. And the applicant has worked with the Lakeland Water Utility to determine where the existing water main is located in the street. Now, should be noted at this time that the water main is actually located under the street pavement, sort of on the south half of Second Street North. And so it will be necessary for the developer's contractor to pull a separate permit for construction in the right-of-way, as well as their connection to the water main permit. Those are two separate permits that'll still need to be acquired. They don't need to weigh in necessarily to your action here tonight, those are separate cert. We also ask that the septic permit be submitted for city records. I haven't seen it yet. If it's been sent to the clerk, maybe she can confirm one way or the other, but we need to see a copy of the permit. The design has been submitted, but not the permit. So we should wait for that permit to come in before the final approval is granted. So you can, again, make something like that, a condition of approval, if the council is looking to take such action. And then finally, exterior lighting. Code does require that any exterior lighting be arranged in such a way to deflect light away from adjoining property and away from the public street. So those are, if it shows up correctly in your, in your printout of my memo, the items in bold are those that could be considered as conditions of approval if council is contemplating approval, with the exception of item 11, which has now since been addressed. And, yeah, I guess it's just 11, because 12 mentions that there are other permits required for that water main connection. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, or Mayor, you could move on to whatever the clerk says is the next step in the process here.
Well, we'll open a public hearing in just one minute. I didn't hear you read it, but I, or, I didn't hear you say it, but I thought that I read one of the recommended conditions was no vegetative cutting, and that didn't seem possible to me.
Let's see, I don't remember that being a part of my memo, so let me look and see if I commented on that.
Kim, do you recall that, when I was reviewing the packet electronically?
I did see something about trees.
There was something that no trees would be removed, or, and that's not, that's not possible.
So I don't, I don't think that's a part of my memo.
Okay.
For me, councilmembers, I can attest that when I put together a draft resolution for a conditional use permit. I looked back at some of your older conditional use permits, I looked at staff reports from John and...
So it's in the resolution?
Yes, it is in the resolution, certainly that is a draft. I'm sure that's going to be changed considerably.
All right. All right, with that said, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the hearing, public hearing.
I second it.
With that said, I'm going to open the public hearing for consideration of the resolution. So we've heard from the engineer, the introduction of the application, now would be the time for public comment. Anyone that has a comment, a concern, or anything that they'd like to share with the council, now is the time for that. So if I could ask you to approach the podium there, give your name and address for the record, we'd love to hear from you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council folks. Dennis Lund, 16555, First Street South. Heard a lot of great comments about this from the engineer, thank you for that. Unfortunately, I have a hard time putting some of that together without seeing it on paper. Is any of that available to the public, or is it only between the council and the applicant?
It's all available.
Where would I find a copy of that?
Kim, do we have additional packets, so on that back desk?
Okay.
Entire packet is back there.
Okay, I will review that and perhaps be back in a couple minutes.
All right. Anybody else like to speak?
Nita Chroma, I am at 16520, Fourth Street North. I believe this is the lot that's directly behind my house.
Okay, are you to the east?
I am, let's...
Or to the north?
North.
I'm the north.
Okay, all right.
Couple, couple of things are a little concerning. You said no grading permit was necessary on this one. We have a direct sloping towards our house. There's, you know, there is natural sloping going on right in our backyard. I'm afraid that we're going to get a lot of stormwater runoff in our basement, which is a live-in basement. So I am concerned about that and want to make sure that stormwater management is done appropriately, and what the grading's going to be. Are they bringing in fill? What kind of soil is it? These are, these are things that I would want to know. I'm in construction myself, these are things that I've, I definitely, it's going to be very close to our backyard, there's like a 10, you know, 10 feet away from our property line, if even that. It's, it's pretty darn close.
If I'm reading this correctly, it's 47.5 feet, the building.
From the driveway?
No, the driveway is 10 feet. You're right, it's 10 feet.
Yeah, the building.
But the driveway is, is 10 feet, correct? Where people could park in the driveway?
Yes.
Yes. And the lighting on there, could you repeat what the lighting's going to be on that?
So if I could do this, if I could just identify each one of your issues, then I'm going to point the finger to either John, or to the applicant, or to one of us to answer those.
Okay.
So we will go through them one by one.
Okay.
So lighting is something you'd like more information on as well?
Lighting, grainy, grading, and specifically the stormwater management, I don't, the runoff, I am very concerned about it going into our backyard and into our house.
Okay, that's fair. Kim, should I take all public comment and come back with answers?
Mayor and councilmembers, I would suggest that you do take all the public comments.
Okay, all right. So we're going to answer your questions, we're going to take everyone's comments or concerns first, okay? Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, my name is Ben Robey, I'm to the, directly to the south of the proposed site, and I talked at the last meeting a little bit about some of my concerns. One of them I did not bring up at the meeting last time, I spoke to the gentleman who's in charge of this particular proposal at, that night afterwards, outside. I also spoke to the gentleman who then told me he was in charge of their building site, he was a building manager, I'm not sure whose name was. But I, both of them, I brought up the concern that I had as a commercially class A driver. I happen to know that the Second Street North is a limited road use in the spring. There are road restrictions at five tons, which when, my little tiny straight flatbed that I had at 20,000 pounds, I could take one pallet of material without a forklift down Lakeland Shores Road. So I happen to know we're going to have a severe problem there, access to a driveway that happens to be past the road restriction sign in front of my home, which I happen to know over time will destroy the road. Unless you bring that up to code for a seven-ton road, I don't know. You tell me.
I'm going to stay consistent and take your...
Sure.
Because I want to comment, but I'm going to wait.
That was a concern of mine, and that ties, tries directly into what I brought up last time, which was, seemed to be, put the kibosh on quickly because the county's not going to allow direct access off the road. The reason for the direct access off the road for Chavez and the other companies was this very reason. You either need to access directly onto a county highway where you have the road limits allowing you to bring in commercial vehicles and back out, or you don't. So the first concern I have is Second Street North. The second is this, this proposed driveway, like you said, at 14 feet, or, he said it's 14 feet, is very different than a full width road, and what is, what are the, what are the parameters of the construction of that, and will that sustain multiple commercial vehicles over a period of time? Because that is directly, we're not 10 feet, we're talking a few feet from my driveway, or from my yard, if in fact it's what he said, which is a limit of 22 minimum feet wide. Now we're literally, I'll be lawn mowing up against the driveway. And will that be gravel, and will that gravel end up in my yard? Will I end up, you know, having to deal with that as well? But the runoff, whether or not that driveway can support multiple commercial vehicles, Second Street North, obviously, is another concern. At the site meeting, when I was there, third thing that I was concerned with was the mention that the septic was going to be on the south side of the property, draining toward the road. Is that my understanding?
I haven't seen the septic plan, but we'll ask the question for you.
Okay.
So you want to know where the septic is going to go?
Curious where the septic is. I was told, I can't remember who told me that, I don't, it wasn't, you know, set in stone, but the proposed, the proposal idea that I heard was along the south end of the property. My septic is right on the other side of the fence. Similar to my neighbor on the north, I have issues with drainage to that area already with my septic, which is, I think, 20 years old. And so with additional water running off a parking lot, and a septic going down into that area, we're now, I'm already saturated every, every spring with the snow melting. I'm going to now run into more issues if in fact we have runoff, and if in fact there is proposed septic on the south side.
So septic location and runoff concern?
And runoff issues. Lighting is also a concern of mine, when you brought that up. And the tree removal is a very large portion for me, because there are beautiful trees lining the north side of my property fence, which I would love to have left there, please, so that I don't have to look out my beautiful back windows to a building. I don't want to look at a building, I'd rather look at the nice trees that I have. My big selling point to my house, if you Google map my house on aerial view, you can't see my house. My house is covered by gigantic trees in a circle. So anytime those get removed, you're removing the value of my property, as the shading is beautiful in my backyard and the front yard, I would hate to see those go. So that's a concern I have. And like you said, there's no proposal, I understand, yet for a tree removal, and how that looks, and what the code would be on that, since that tree will affect my property and theirs. So, I don't know how that works, I'm not familiar with the building code, so, those are my main concerns, so, at this point.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up.
Dennis Lund, I'm back again. Thank you for the opportunity to review the documents. First of all, is this what we're showing as the far northwest part of the city that's labeled Zone D on the map?
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Looking at the comment, I see the document showed 55 percent impervious, but so, or 50 percent, somebody said 55. Please consider how the impervious service will be affected as we increase the driveway width, because that's going to shift that percentage. Tree and rain gardens, love to have the stormwater advantage on site, like to see that. As far as screening and cutting trees, like to see as many trees kept as possible, but if they have to remove, which generally happens with construction, what can we do about requiring a replacement? Not necessarily same place, obviously it won't work, but someplace else on the lot. I have a lot of concerns about the business type. As I see the plan, it looks like it's a high bay garage being built with tall doors, I'm assuming semi-capable sort of business approach for that. We already have six or seven, depends on how you do the math, car slash auto dealers on County Road 18. Now granted, most of those are in that surrounding city, not on Lakeland Shore, but we have to ask, do we want to allow as a community, a place where when you drive down the road, all you see are truck and car dealers, and this is not specifically allowed, however the business building as proposed would be quite suitable for that sort of application of making it into a truck, car, limo, bus dealer? I'm not quite sure what the difference is between a limo and a bus, but we've got that. Rental, so if he, if the building is put on there as proposed, does the city have any control over the type of business that's placed into that structure? Could the yacht company move from across the street? It's down a few blocks in Lakeland. Could Sharps, or whatever their name is, up on Highway 95, make an outlet down there where they're selling their used and experienced auto parts? Contractors is an extremely broad term, I don't know what that means. Again, that requires a permit and a discussion from the city, if that's great, but if it leaves the business owner, the building owner carte blanche to take and do it if they want to, that is of a concern. Land state company, sounds pretty innocuous, but I don't know what that means. Does that mean I'm going to have, you know, 30-foot-long bulldozers and earth scrapers and things that would be stored on the property? I didn't see any mention in any of the documents on limits on the number of vehicles, or types of things that could be stored exterior to the building. Granted, this is only a building permit, because as I can tell, it's not a separate business being proposed at this time. This is somebody building a building that a business could or could not go into. Hopefully could, we want them paying property taxes. That's my comments at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment?
Larry Pitkinen, and I'm on Third and Quinlan. And I guess our curiosity would have been, we don't know what business is coming in there. And it's like he said, you know, what are, what's the limits on light industrial? Is there a limit on that? Because we don't, there's a lot of things that could fall into light industrial. When you live with somebody who has chemical sensitivities, like my wife does, when the wind's blowing from the west to the east, there's a lot of issues that could be represented there. She's highly allergic to diesel fuel. If there's diesel things going on there, it's not going to be good for her physically. So that was our curiosity, to know what kind of a business was it going to be, you know, going in there, so, yeah, so that was our, our concern.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Kim, did we have any written comments for the record?
No, we did not.
Okay. I think we've heard from everyone that wants to speak then, so I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Kim, so now would be the time for us to actually answer some of these questions and have discussion amongst the council?
Mayor and councilmembers, yes, I answered some of those questions, and I'm sure amongst the council you have questions as well.
And then that's where we could consider our resolution that you prepared for us. Correct?
You could, you may, some of these questions may have to be answered by the applicant, so you are certainly welcome to ask him to come up if he needs to answer some of those questions.
We are going to need the applicant, I'm sure of that. But let's maybe address some of these, these initial concerns. Grading, John, could you speak specifically to grading?
Sure, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, my comment earlier about not requiring a grading permit is not meant to imply that there hasn't been a grading plan or grading review completed. Both have been completed, so there is a full grading plan, as part of the record, has been fully reviewed by our office and by the Middle Saint Croix WMO. So there's adequate drainage controls here to prevent water from running off on the site. Specifically, the neighbor to the north was asking about runoff coming off the parking area to the, to her property. This, this proposal includes a swale or a ditch off the edge of the driveway that catches that drainage and conveys it to the west, to one of the proposed rain garden locations on the property. So that runoff should be adequately controlled by that. As well as, on the, on the north side then of that ditch, there is a, there is a short berm, so, and we think there's adequate controls there for that north side. So the grading, again, has been reviewed as a part of this. My only comment was that a separate grading permit is not required as long as the work is associated with a validly issued building permit, and that's allowed in your code. So we are doing the grading review, same as we would if a grading permit was required.
Okay. Does that answer your question about grading? I'm sure it doesn't completely alleviate your concern, but does it, does it make you feel a little bit better that not only John, but the Middle Saint Croix Water Management Organization has reviewed the, the application specifically for grading?
I guess I'm, I'm having a tough time picturing that 10 feet between my property and that driveway, you're actually going to have adequate room to get a rain garden, a swale, berm, you know, all that you're...
No, not, not everything, just the swale and the berm are there. They convey the runoff to the west, where the rain garden is much bigger area. You can see it on the grading plan as a part of the submittal, if you're interested there. But it's just...
Here, you can look at this one if you'd like.
In that, in that 10 feet, it's just the swale and the, and the little berm.
Here's the berm.
That fit in there.
Then, John, as long as we're in that same vein, the septic location and the neighbor to the south's concerns?
Yeah, so there's, there's 40 feet from that south property line to the building, proposed building location. The proposed drain fields, drain field is between the building and the south property line, as described by the individual who was asking about that, Mr. Robey.
Okay.
So that is, that is correct, his understanding is correct, that's where the, the drain field is proposed.
And then he had indicated that that would be the northwest corner of his property, or at the least the northern edge of his property, that that's a low point. Do you see any water leaving this site and further saturating that portion of the neighbor's property?
Well, based on the contours, Mayor, that are shown, the existing contours and the proposed contours that are shown here, the, the runoff should be contained on the site and conveyed around to the north to a proposed rain garden location. and conveyed around to the north to a proposed rain garden location.
Okay. And then, John, if this is approved and construction begins, are you out there at some point in time confirming that the grading and the rain gardens and everything were installed according to plan?
Yeah, we can be, and that's entirely up to the council's discretion. As a matter of practice, we have gone- we go out at your direction. It has been Lakeland Shore's preference in the past that we don't make that a- an automatic thing, but at your direction, we'd be glad to do that. And we can work with the contractor, or simply do an inspection when they report that their grading is substantially complete. We can go out and meet with them at that time.
Okay. I mean, frankly, based on the concerns of the neighbors, I think that's in everyone's interest that that would occur.
Yeah.
That's my point of view. There was a question about the impervious surface calculation with the road being wider.
Mm-hmm.
What is the maximum impervious surface allowed?
I believe it's sixty-five percent. That was in the memo, so-
And a fair amount of that road actually is occurring within right-of-way that's not applied to this-
That's right.
To this formula anyway, so-
That's right.
It's going to meet the requirement.
And regardless, they'll need to revise their site plan and submit it and demonstrate that they do in fact meet that requirement with the wider driveway. So, I'm- I agree with you, Mayor, that I speculate that that'll be the case, but they'll need to demonstrate it.
The concern was expressed about the weight limit on the road. Frankly, I don't see that as a problem for the neighbors or for the city. This property will have to comply with the weight limits.
They will.
So when there's weight limits, you will not be able to go up and down that road, period.
With anything over a five-ton axle load.
Correct. So-
Is it five-ton per axle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's typically for, you know, four to six weeks in the spring. But, well, any one of these council members puts the sign up, and when you see the sign up, you can't be on there anything over five tons.
Yeah, we deal with the one.
Okay. The question was asked about different access. We know, and we have it in writing from the county, that they will not allow a curb cut onto County Road eighteen, not when there's an alternative access point. So if you're landlocked and that's your only option, that's your only hope for a curb cut directly onto eighteen. So, we have asked that, and we did receive written confirmation from the county that that wasn't an option. I just want you to know, we did ask. Yep, working my way there. So now, if the applicant wouldn't mind coming forward, because I think the rest of these questions are for you, or you're the most qualified to answer them. Would you start with screening and/or tree removal?
As far as the trees go, obviously if there's anything in the way, the trees would come down at the point of the time of excavation, but we- we do plan on replanting several trees. I have a landscape company, so as far as the trees and everything go, it's going to be a very well-manicured property. And then I'm very, very familiar with rain gardens, water runoff, all that stuff. So we build rain gardens, buy specs from counties, all that stuff. So, getting back to the question, as far as the trees go, if they're in the way, or if they're just a useless tree, I would rather see that tree be gone and for us to put in a, you know, a better-looking tree.
So I want to give you my opinion of it, okay? Your property, your trees, right?
Correct.
But I think being sensitive to your neighbors and their concerns is in your interest in the short term and the long term.
Oh, for sure. Yep.
So, I don't personally feel like there's anything we can do to require you to do, you know, to keep all the trees or to keep certain trees. I think that's an issue for you to be sensitive to, and, you know, to work with your neighbors on.
I agree.
That's my point of view.
Hey, Mayor, I did a, while you were- after receiving that comment, I did just kind of a rough count, if you're interested.
Yes.
Okay, so it looks like about twenty-four trees will need to be removed. Twenty-three, I'm sorry, nineteen trees will be preserved, and the applicant is proposing twenty-one new trees. So, what's that, twenty-four plus nineteen is forty-three? So there are a total of forty-three on the lot now. This includes, by the way, the portion of the driveway in the right-of-way that's not vacated. So, with forty-three total trees, twenty-four will be removed and twenty-one will be replay- installed after project's done.
Is it- is it specific to what type of replacement tree? Because clearly a new sapling isn't as big as a thirty-year-old old.
Right. The application doesn't specify species, just where the proposed trees could go.
Yes.
I was going to bring up the point, and John kind of touched on it. Has a tree inventory been done? Well, it kind of has been done.
Okay, you're just referencing that right now. I know in some other areas of places where the trees have been taken out after the tree inventory has been done, and the applicant has had to replace the same amount of caliper inches of the trees that were taken out. Do we know- do we know what caliper inches are? So if a tree is-
Yes.
This big, you got to put, you take out twenty-three trees. Each tree is an inch, that's twenty-
Where have you seen that done? I've never seen that done.
I'll tell you that in other places. I've been experiencing that.
Okay.
So, it's a- it really addresses, I believe, the concerns that the audience has, the neighbors. Because, okay, yeah, I'm going to take out a ten-inch tree, that's one tree, but I'm only going to put in a one-inch tree back in. That's not fair. So I think we need to take a peek at, you know, John, somebody's got to go and measure the trees that count, and I would recommend that the amount of trees that are taken out, those caliper inches of trees have to be replaced.
Well, why don't we ask the applicant what he intends to put back in for trees, you know?
Well, to, for starters, if I put in a, just say a six-foot Black Hill Spruce, and let's just say it's got a four-inch trunk or whatever on it, and it's not ten inches, but over time, it will be more than ten inches. And then the type of trees-
Well, and a spruce is going to provide more cover than-
An evergreen, rather than some of the scrub trees that are there.
Right. Yep, and I would say probably ninety percent of the perimeter, not the whole perimeter, but the ones that are going to go around the outside will all be spruce. I can tell you that right now. But more of the manicured areas where we'll cut the grass and take care of, you know, them areas, I would like to have, you know, maybe a maple or a birch or something like that, something a little more appealing. But for the outside stuff, for everybody looking in and looking out, it'll be all spruce trees.
Any other comments regarding trees? Not that we can't come back to it, but let's keep working on our list here. Could you be more specific about your business type? Kind of your- what you see your hours of operation, and I'm not trying to be heavy-handed here. I just think, again, open line of communication so that everyone understands what type of a neighbor you're going to be.
Right. Well, for the landscaping, I just have one crew, and we start at eight in the morning, and my goal is to be home by, you know, six or seven at night. I'm- I'm not running like I used to run with two or three crews, very low-key. I'm actually, you know, on the other end of the spectrum right now. I'm not looking to grow the business. I'm looking to just be, you know, forty, fifty hours a week is really all I need. And then as far as the bus stuff goes, they only go out usually, some Fridays, Saturdays, they'll go out probably between noon and one maybe for a wedding. And then they'll do, you know, a sporting event, or maybe a birthday party, or a wedding transportation. And again, that's- that's very low-key stuff, too. We're very, very selective on the groups that we take. Our drivers, some of them have been with us for fifteen years, and they would- they would- they would show up, pull their bus out, drive their vehicle into the shop, and then leave, and then when they come back, they would, you know, it's going to be all very, very quiet. They'll- they'll pull the bus in, back their vehicle out, and then they'll- they'll go home. There's not going to be any activity whatsoever with them drivers, and it's-
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but to be fair, if you're doing an evening run, I mean, it's- it's realistic that they- they're coming back at two o'clock in the morning?
Correct. Usually bar closes, and then, so once- once we drop the customer off, it's probably two-twenty, two-thirty, and then however long it takes us to get back to the shop.
What's the maximum number of vehicles that you're operating that could be coming back?
Well, we only have three right now.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
We had nine at one point. And again, I'm not looking to grow the business at all.
Yep.
I've done everything I needed to do to get to this point, and I'm not looking to grow anything, so.
I would say that comes back to your screening issue, because you're going to have headlights. I don't know that you're going to have a lot of noise necessarily if it's one driver per vehicle, but you're definitely going to have headlights.
Correct.
So, you know, that comes back to the screening concern. So evergreens, I think, are the way to go, in my mind. Diesel? Anything diesel?
We do have diesel trucks, but I think, getting back to your point, I'm not going to ask for a diesel tank, no-
No storage on-site.
Yeah, none of that stuff. I don't- I don't need that, I don't want it. We got to deal with Holiday right down the street, so we fuel everything there. And then, as far as diesel goes, I mean, we do our own oil changes, but that's it. I don't- I don't do my own brakes anymore. I don't work on my own stuff anymore. We have a guy in Hudson that does all our repairs. So, as far as stuff like that goes, there won't be any diesel smell or anything like that. Maybe, you know, coming and going with the exhaust, but no- no diesel.
And all your vehicles are stored inside, so it's not like in the winter that you're- you're firing them up and letting them run for an hour?
Yeah, especially in the winter, because, yeah, they'll-
They're inside?
Correct. And yeah, we, otherwise we'd have to, you know, plug them in, but-
Right.
That's not going to be the case.
Not like school buses, where they can't let them out in the parking lot for-
Okay, right.
Just trying to make sure we understand.
Your landscaping business, do you, is that just seven, eight months a year, and then you're done? Or are you going to snowplow?
Well, we plow snow. But again, getting back to what we used to do and what we do now, I would have three trucks with plows. I don't even use my skid steers anymore in the winter. I will if I have to load trucks, if we have to do snow removal, but for the most part, and again, I mean, you can kind of pick and choose when you want to come and go, you know, with the snow stuff. You can just kind of gauge the weather, and it's not like we're going to be purposely leaving at, you know, two o'clock in the morning, or coming back at two o'clock in the morning. We'll be respectful of the neighbors and just kind of coordinate it.
But there are times you can't control that.
Correct, correct.
You do your best to control it, but there's times you can't.
Yes, yes. And if a driver has to, you know, bring a truck home for three or four hours, you know, so he doesn't have to come there at two in the morning, well, that's what's going to happen, because we have con- we've had the same contracts for many, many years. And as far as coming and going, we have times where we need to be at the property and make sure it's accessible for them. So, you know, getting back to that, it's- it's easier to control than the bus stuff.
I mean, are your snowplows attached to pickups, or they get- or bigger trucks?
Well, I have two F-550s that have plows on them, and one- one ton truck that has a plow on it. So they're all small trucks. Nothing- nothing like a L-8000 or anything like that, a dump truck, no big-
Not like a county plow truck.
Correct, yeah. Just all small plow trucks.
The last thing that I wrote down here was lighting. What type of lighting do you propose, and can you control the, you know, the wash, if you will, of the lights?
Yes. What I was told was nothing flashing out. It's all got to be flashing down, and I'm-
What do you mean, flashing?
Not flashing, but pointing down.
Directed.
Yeah.
We don't want flash.
Yeah. So, but anyway, it'll be pointed down, and they'll all have, you know, motion sensors on them. So, when the drivers come and go, I mean, that would be the worst-case scenario is, you know, when a driver comes back, I don't even think we really, you know, need the lights. It's easier to pull in and out in the dark.
So it's more of a security feature than anything?
Yeah, I guess, I would just rather have a switch to turn them on and off if we're going to be down there, because even with, you know, with the motion sensors, if something goes wrong, I don't want the lights staying on.
Right.
I- I really don't even, I mean, we'll put the lights on there to code whatever, but as far as, and we'll, you know, if it bothers-
So you don't see having a building with the light down light on all the time?
No.
You'd rather have a switch light. And nothing on a pole?
No, 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 no. If anything, we would have it backed up to your lot facing the shop if we had anything on a pole, but we don't- we don't need that. We don't want that. Like I said, the darker it is, the easier it is to pull in and out, just with the headlights of the vehicle.
Sure. Okay.
So you're basically saying you don't need any lighting, exterior lighting?
Well, per code.
Yeah, but they're going to need it per code.
Yeah, there'll be some lights on the building, and they'll- they'll be facing down when they come on. And as far as the motion sensors or the manual on and off switch, I'll do whatever I need to do to make that work. So whatever- whatever the bare minimum is for lighting on the outside of the building is what we plan on doing.
And even that, if I'm hearing you, won't be on in the evening, but it'll have motion sensors, so if it detects motion, then it would turn on.
Correct. And we can, you know, adjust that from, you know, one minute to two minutes.
Comes back to screening, too?
Yes, yep.
Okay. What's the material on the exterior of the building? What's it going to look like?
It's all poured walls, so it's all concrete.
Does it have a stamp or any type of a-
No, but it will be painted.
Okay.
Just probably a beige-y tan color, just natural color.
Okay. And is that from the ground up?
Correct.
Okay.
Is it having a flat roof or pitched roof?
It'll be trusses, so it'll be pitched.
What's the height, maximum height?
I think according to the plan, it was thirty-five, but- but the building itself is only going to be-
So the side wall's like twenty, but at the peak of the roof, it's thirty-two?
Yeah, the side walls will be sixteen feet out of the ground, and then I think the peak, I'm not sure if it's eight feet or twelve feet, but it may be thirty feet tops.
But you're below the maximum height of thirty-five feet, whether it's residential or commercial.
Correct, yes.
So you probably have, what, three or four doors on the north side, overhead doors?
There will be six doors-
Six doors.
On the north side and-
There's a service door, too, right?
Yep, there'll be one service door right in the middle on the north side of the building, and one service door on the east side of the building, one service door on the west side of the building, and that's it.
Did we discuss signage? Are you going to have a monument sign or a sign on the building?
We don't intend to put a sign out, no. Like I said, we're-
We do have a sign on- We do have a sign ordinance, so if you were gonna change your position on that, you'd need to contact the city?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts from the council?
Septic system, I think.
Um, John did mention that that is going on the south side of the, um, building?
It's going on the southwest corner of the lot.
John mentioned that he had mentioned the, uh, do you have the septic system with a permit?
It's, it's-
Kim, John said that Kim might have it, and may not have it?
No.
We have the plan.
It can have a-
We just haven't rece- have you received the permit?
I have the application for the permit, and I was gonna wait until after the meeting, so, um, I, I will submit that-
So assuming that you issued a permit, the city needs a copy of it?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep, and the, the guy who we're gonna hire for the, for the septic part, um, he'll deal with all that stuff, so-
Okay, just so that the city has a copy.
Yes.
The driveway, I think that that was kind of a new development in terms of the width and the material. Um, if I understood from a previous conversation with the engineer, um, and putting myself in your shoes, you had planned, uh, gravel initially, right? Um, personally, I think that needs to be pavement. Um, I realize that's very expensive, so, you know, council hasn't discussed it. I, I think we could maybe put a time element on there that gives you a little bit of time to get up and running, but I think that should be pavement, i- is my opinion, uh, if that's something that we can talk about, but-
And according to John's memo, it says city code requires asphalt or concrete surface.
For the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, would that include all parking areas, everything, John?
That's how I would interpret that, yeah. Driveway and parking surface.
So I know that's a considerable expense that you, that you weren't anticipating. Is that accurate?
Yes, yep.
You're not gonna do any hard surface around it at all, right?
Gravel.
Well-
Just gravel around the whole building, or do you-
We'd probably put a patio out there, um, uh, but as far as the hard surfaces goes, we, we didn't, um, my, my thought for the driveway, um, was when we subcut it, um, we'll put down, uh, fabric on the whole thing, um, which may or may not be required, but we're gonna do it anyway. Um, it's just for load purposes, and then, uh, put in three-inch clean rock on top of that, um, and then inch and a half clean rock on top of that, and to top dress, we'd probably just go with three-quarter inch clean rock on top of that. Um, so as far as the dust part goes, there's not gonna be really any minus or anything like that in the material, um-
But our code doesn't allow that.
Right, I understand that now, and I, they just brought that to my attention last week.
So that's a considerable expense that you weren't anticipating.
Correct.
So there's, there's two options, as I see it. Either you pave, or you seek a variance, or as a condition of your approval, we could maybe, 'cause I don't know when you plan to start construction, but you're not gonna have pavement in this year anyways. You'd, you wouldn't have it till spring.
Right.
Just the reality of winter construction.
Mm-hmm.
We could maybe be just a little flexible on when that deadline is, but again, to deviate, we'd either have to have a variance-
Mm-hmm.
Or you just have to comply and, and pave.
Right, yep.
Per code.
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
So if I get this right, you're just, the, the parking areas around the building, you're going class five, every, there's no hard surfaces?
Well, that's what he had planned, but code requires it all to be paved.
You indicated that there was a possibility of renting, uh, some of the space to additional businesses. Do you, uh, how much space would be, beyond what you are gonna use for yourself? Um, is there significant square footage that is gonna be available?
No, there's not. Um, I, if I did, uh, rent some space out, it would be to another, um, I have a buddy who cuts grass for a living, so, um, would consider him a landscape company, but just doing something that I do not do. I don't, I don't cut grass. We do all hardscapes. Um, so we do walls and pavers. Um, we really don't plant anything, um, not a lot of mulch, not a lot of edging. Um, we just do outdoor kitchens and bigger projects like that, and then, um, the guy who would possibly come in, um, would be considered a landscape company, um, but he cuts grass, does spring cleanup, fall cleanup, and he plows snow also. So same or similar type businesses.
I'd like to circle back to the driveway again. The number four in the city engineer's memo, the proposed driveway access is sixteen feet, and the city code requires twenty-four. What's your, what's your plan for that?
Well, um-
I think one of the things that I'll just make mention of, and I think the code is based on the fact that there would be a traffic issue, in and out traffic, you know, at the same time. I just, I'm just mentioning that to say it at this point, so everybody kinda thinks about it from that perspective. On a commercial business, generally you have customer traffic, and I don't think you're gonna have a lot of that at all.
No, our goal is to not even, you know, you guys will hopefully not even know we're back there. Um, we'll leave in the morning, we'll come-
Well, I think that, I think the big building's gonna tip it off, but that's-
I feel like going to twenty-four is, is opposite of what we're trying to accomplish with the neighbors, frankly. I mean, we're trying to minimize runoff, we're trying to minimize the number of trees, uh, you know, I feel like going wider on that is, is pushing us in the wrong direction.
And that's why I brought up the thing with-
Yeah.
Traffic, 'cause you're not gonna have that issue.
No.
But it still says what it says, John, so I don't know, um-
It's a part of your requirements, so again, it might be something that, you know, that if council was, uh, open to considering a variance request from that requirement, that could be something the applicant could submit separately.
And when we do a variance correctly or wrong, from a parliamentary standpoint, we have to have a condition, public hearing to do variances, right?
We do, yeah.
We wouldn't be able to do that tonight, we'd have to-
No, no, I understand that.
It'd be a separate application.
I just want the audience to know that if the applicant, you know, wants to do these things, we have to have another hearing and have another public hearing.
So, John, I wanna respect the process, but I, I do think that this is a little bit unique, in that it's, it's not a road, it's a driveway. Um, you know, the variance process in and of itself takes time and it costs more money. Um, based on the comments I'm hearing, I, I think it's what everyone would lean towards anyways. I haven't surveyed if there's this going on or this going on, but, um, I mean, is there, is there an alternative? That is on, that would be within city, uh, right-of-way, or, or on city property?
An alternative to the variance process?
Yeah, I mean, is that a, is that an access road? Is that a-
Well, it's a commercial driveway.
On city, on city right-of-way, though?
Right, yep.
So- 'Cause that's road right-of-way.
I'm not, I'm not aware of a vi- of a process other than the variance. Um, now, it's completely up to the councils to whether you wanna waive fees, or, um, deposits, or that sort of thing, when it comes to applying for a variance, and, um, you know, so that's within your discretion. It's within your discretion to, um, to approve a variance for a narrow driveway, and I, um, I wouldn't object to the comments that have been made in that, you know, if you're talking about a commercial driveway, for instance, for an office building or a convenience store, you need to make allowances for vehicles coming and going at the same time. You want them next to you, be able to comfortably do that. In this case, it feels like there's a little different situation, where they're probably at most, for the most part, they're leaving. They're only gonna conflict with themselves.
But John, doesn't his driveway, I'm trying to be argumentative, I'm trying to understand it. Doesn't his driveway technically start at his property line?
Yes, I suppose, um-
So I mean-
Depends on how you wanna view that as a council, I guess.
I, I'm primarily focused on from Second Street to his property.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the width of that road. I, I don't, I can't imagine that any neighbor wants that to be twenty-four feet as opposed to sixteen. Am I right in that assumption, neighbors? Yes?
Some streets are less than twelve.
So, maybe we can just, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but maybe we can give some thought to, we are issuing, aren't we, a, a permit for the construction of a driveway on city property? So I wonder if that's a condition of our permit? Maybe, we'll see.
Sure.
We'll give it some thought, okay.
Engineers aren't as creative thinking as attorneys are sometimes, but-
It gets paid less.
Well, where this road will go across city right-of-way, um, if that entire stretch from Second up until his southeastern corner, um, if the, is it the preference of the neighbors that that be narrower rather than wider? And I saw heads going up and down, saying, yes, we'd rather have a sixteen-
I noticed the nods affirmative.
Yeah.
This was giving a clarification of the question.
Yeah.
All right.
I think the code would apply then from the southeast corner of his property, um, on through his property, and that may not have as much impact, because you're gonna need the, the hard surface area for your maneuvering your vehicles anyways, to some degree.
It bend in the road when you come up to your parking area, that's probably gonna be wider than-
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
When we go to the north-
With the truck, how big are your trailers, you know?
Oh, they're-
Twenty feet?
Yeah, the biggest trailers, twenty feet, and the, the trucks are probably, you know-
So that radius is gonna be tight?
Well, it looks like it's gradual there.
Is it?
Yeah.
Buses are how big?
Um, the biggest one is, uh, thirty-two feet, so, and the radius on them is, is a lot better than they are, you know, with the, my biggest truck and my biggest trailer. It's just gonna be a little bit longer than that, not much.
Okay. Other comments or thoughts?
Curious as to what this stockpile area, would you contemplate being stockpiled there?
There's a drawing, maybe John can help with that.
So that's typically, uh, during construction, um, it's necessary to first strip the topsoil off the building site and the parking driving areas, and they need a temporary location for that to be stockpiled. That material is, uh, would need to either then be spread around when construction is finished in the areas it'll be planted, or hauled off the site if there's excess.
I thought it might have something to do with this landscaping business.
So do you plan on putting a retaining wall on the north side? Yeah, it, it says proposed-
Yeah, there'll be a, a boulder wall in the northwest corner over there, uh, because we will raise that grade a little bit, um, but along the whole, um-
Perimeter.
I'm sorry?
Along the perimeter is where you're picking up the water and taking it for your rain garden.
Right, right, that's where the swale will be in the little berm, and it's all gonna, um, divert, uh, west. Um, and the big rain garden will be in the northwest corner of the property.
So it looks like, is that bol- boulder wall, the retaining wall, looks like it's almost the length of the building? Is that correct?
It-
If I look at it here?
Well, once, once we, um, you know, get the elevations and stuff like that, it could be forty feet, it could be fifty feet.
Okay.
Um, but we're just, we're gonna make sure it's gonna go from, uh, you know, grade, uh, it, and I'm guessing the, the highest it's probably gonna be is three and a half to four feet in the northwest corner.
So it's a transition?
Yes, down to grade, um, going east.
Okay. Other thoughts? So we have a draft resolution, uh, that was provided, understanding that it wasn't specific necessarily to this application. I think we oughta go through those one by one quickly.
Mayor and council members, I will note that some of these conditions are, um, applicable to this application specifically, as far as the hours of operation, um, number of employees, that sort of thing, things that were included in the application.
Okay, that's helpful. So item one is factual. Item two, yard lights shall be shaded and angled to light the immediate area only, and shall in other respects conform to city zoning code. No neon lights or signs are permitted. Check?
Check.
Signage on the building shall conform to the city sign ordinance.
Check.
At this time, there's no signage planned, but-
No signs, yeah.
If any, it will comply. Uh, removal of trees is prohibitive. We know that that is not in the, so would it be removal and replacement of trees as per the plan? Does that seem accurate, John?
Yeah, yep.
But he doesn't have to plant the trees where it's on the plan, right?
Yeah.
Exact same spot?
No, he has a plan that-
That's what I'm saying.
He has a plan that shows where they're being planted.
It's a different sheet. It's the one sheet three of four of the color plan set that shows where the proposed trees will go.
And they'll be really, really close to what they have on the plan.
Septic system must be maintained in good working order. Hours of operation shall be limited to six AM to eight PM Monday through Friday, ten AM to five PM on Saturdays, no operations on Sundays.
Assume that didn't say, didn't mention his bus business, huh?
The bus business will have different hours.
Yeah.
Was that what the application said, though?
Yes.
Um, so how do we wanna address that? Um, I, I mean, hours of operation, that's not to s- suggest you can't come and go, but I think we should be clear that you may come and go outside of your hours of operation, but you won't be there with the doors oper- open, you know, open for business.
Right. Well, them, them hours that were just discussed right there were, um, for when I was gonna come and go, and, like I said, we only have one crew-
That's your landscaping.
That's the landscaping business, not the bus.
Right.
As far as the buses go, I'm, I understand what Brian's going, going for here. He's trying to figure out how to word it.
The mayor, come here, items eight and nine are related to hours as well, and they'd speak to those.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, there it is.
All right, so I'll just cover seven fast. Thanks, John. A number of employees will remain at three to four, with two owners. Staff occasionally may visit shop during off-hours for administrative work. Uh, landscaping employees will arrive between the hours of six and seven. Leave for project sites. Equipment will be returned to the shop between the hours of six and eight PM. All noise ordinance restrictions will apply and be adhered to. Limo bus activity, uh, we've got a typo there, will be allowed in evenings of Friday and Saturday and adhered to noise ordinance restrictions, and that's really limited to coming and going.
That's all we would be doing, is, um, leaving and coming back, and that said, the driver would get in their vehicle and leave?
So I'd, I'd like to add, specific to, um, entering and leaving the property. Do you feel like that explains it, Kim?
Yeah, let me just repeat that to you, Mayor. Councilmember's number nine, limo bus activity, uh, will be allowed for entry and leaving Friday and Saturday, and adhere to noise ordinance restrictions.
I think I would change that to Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, 'cause if the bar closes at two-thirty on Sunday morning, from Saturday night, but that has to be Sunday, early morning.
So to enter and leave premises, the evenings, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
But didn't you contemplate, you know, I mean, don't people take these buses, or these limos, is that what we're talking about here?
They're just small limo buses, and then there, there will, every, we might have two or three runs a month. I, I don't wanna put a number on it.
Okay, no, but I mean, but-
Well, frankly, I think that helps alleviate a little bit of concern for me, to hear that it's not every Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all three vehicles going in and out. You're not operating at that level right now.
Well, and, and it's a seasonal thing, too.
Sure.
From, uh, March. It's, it's based on really weddings is what gears our business up.
Okay.
Um, and it's-
And I'm not trying to paint you into a corner, I just wanna understand a little bit of what, what's a realistic level of activity.
But what happens when the Super Bowl arrives? I mean, did you-
Twenty-four, seven.
I did, I did one run for the Super Bowl. I did, I did one run for the Super Bowl.
You actually think we're gonna get a Super Bowl back here, John?
No, but I mean, it could be some other event.
Well, the Final Four is coming.
Yeah. Well, it's a business, it's just like any other business, you know, you had the bar, a bar closing, not that that one happened, or whatever, but-
Getting back to, you know, the Friday, Saturday, Sunday stuff, I think people can understand that part. But there's an occasional run during the week. We might do a Saints game, we might do a Twins game. I'm not saying that the buses won't come and go Monday through Thursday, but it's so-
Well, maybe we oughta just say allowed evenings.
Yeah, the-
I mean, frankly, it's evenings and mornings if you're coming back at-
Yeah.
So is it after hours? It's really after hours. So limo bus activity may, or is allowed after hours for entering and exiting premises. Does that make sense, Kim? Does everybody else think that makes sense?
Yep.
Okay. It'll be recorded at the office of the county recorder for Washington County and shall be binding on the property owners, their successors, heirs, and assigns. Property owner shall consent in writing to the issuance and recordation of this permit, waiving any objection thereto, and further shall consent to the entry on the described property by city council members and city staff, including contractors, when reasonably necessary for purpose of inspection, replacement, or restoration. I'm sorry, is that something we ask for?
Mayor and councilmembers, that came directly from three other CUPs. They were older CUPs, I've never seen something like that.
So I'm not comfortable with that unless we added language that said, "with prior notice." I don't think that we should be showing up on anybody's property unannounced to do an inspection.
I would be very comfortable with eliminating number eleven period, or just a statement that the city engineer is allowed to, with prior notice, to go inspect those things that you had spoke about earlier.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree.
How about not only the city engineer, you're gonna have to be up to code with fire, so the fire department's gotta come?
Right.
Well, yeah, that's-
That's-
Actually, right now, the fire department doesn't do inspections, but they're-
We're trying to implement that.
That's what we're working on.
Yeah.
So.
I think the key is with notice.
At any stamp.
Of when, yeah. I mean, obviously, if it's an emergency situation, that's fire or police, and they have that authority anyways.
Right.
Okay. No outside storage is allowed?
What does that mean?
Well, that's trailers, that's vehicles, that's rock, that's mulch, that, was that your intent?
Well, we'll have-
I'm getting the look like, where did that come from?
Yeah, 'cause I would've never said that. We do have trailers outside. My, my big thing is I want all my vehicles inside, in a nice, warm shop, you know, in the winter. But as far as trailers go, I mean, I only have three trailers, and they're not big.
And they'd be on your driveway anyway, right?
Yeah, yep.
In front of the garage doors?
Yeah.
So if we change that to outside storage is limited to your-
Impervious surface.
Impervious surface area?
Yeah, that would be fine, 'cause I mean, even if I have, let's say I have some extra gravel or some extra sand or some extra dirt, at the end of the day, if I don't use it on that property, it's going back to the shop either way. And what I do now is I just use it at my house. It's not like it's sitting there getting bigger and bigger. But there will be, you know, sand and gravel, it's what we use the most of. And most of the time, we just leave it on the truck and use it for the next job.
So outside storage is allowed on impervious surface only? And can we say on a short-term basis, or?
Yeah, yeah, I just-
We don't, we don't want a situation where you're stockpiling and-
I won't, that's not gonna happen, because there's, like I said, if it's gravel, it's probably gonna stay on the truck, and it's probably gonna be used for the next job, 'cause gravel and sand is what we use the most of. And if I, if I'm gonna do a different job, and I have a yard of sand or a yard of gravel on the truck, and I need to dump it for a few days, it's not like it's gonna be a gigantic pile ever in the future.
Yeah. Again, I just wanna be clear, I mean, it's your property, and I think you should have rights to operate your business. I just wanna manage expectations and put as much out there as possible so that-
We don't get a call saying, hey, he's got a pile of sand sitting there.
Right, and if I did do something like that, I mean, my preference honestly would be to put it, you know, either on the-
East side, so you don't see it from the road or whatever.
Yeah, somewhere where, where you guys don't have to look at it.
Not to east side?
Yeah. But if it's, if it's on the impervious surfaces, I think everybody would be able to see it there. I'm thinking, you know, try to screen it, you know, maybe behind the building, on the-
Well, like your trailers, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but code's gonna require that to be on an impervious surface anyways.
No, no, they'll be, they'll be on the impervious surface.
The little pile of excess material that's only gonna be there for a short period of time, I'm, I'm less concerned about.
Okay, okay.
If you're stockpiling, that's a different issue.
Right.
Okay. WMO comments are met. SEH, conditions of approval, would be a condition. And your fees will be paid. Where are we on the paving? Is that something that you can comply with by the end of next year?
Well, I would like to try for a variance.
You don't wanna try for it. I, I, I mean, I'm one of five votes here, but that's gonna be a hard sell. I'll be real honest with you, I think that's gonna be a hard sell.
So would it be from, when you say paving, I'm assuming you're talking about the driveway?
Blacktop or concrete.
Right, and it can't be, can it be millings? It, it's a hard surface.
John, what would your, like a regrind? I mean, that's almost considered gravel, isn't it?
We talked about that on the phone a couple weeks back. I'd be hard-pressed to advise that, that's the same. Millings can set up for a time when they're placed just right, but they, it's kind of like an in-between asphalt and gravel, they don't last forever, they don't last like an asphalt-paved street does. And so I, I would have my reservations. Now, I would say, you know, council can, you know, go whatever direction you want, but I don't, we, in the business, we don't generally consider that a paved surface. We consider it a gravel surface.
What are other councilmember thoughts on that issue?
I just think that it's for that part that, not from the Second Street up through the neighborhood and then up to where his actual property line is, that can wait for a while, but I think that that, whatever that first distance is, that really needs to be paved.
You mean from Second Street north to his property line?
Yeah.
The driveway, the main entrance.
And I would be more than happy to give some type of a concession that he do that, and we can wait a little while back here to do the rest of it.
On his property?
Yeah.
John, what do you think?
I'd agree with that.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with it, I, I look at other businesses that we have in town, you know, that have some gravel.
Well, you're right about that, I mean, the balloon place has an awful lot of gravel, the trucking spot on the corner has gravel.
Trucking spot has a lot of gravel, they-
John, how is that, that, is it just that it's been there that long, and?
Yeah, I don't know, all, those examples have been around longer than I have. I don't know if they predate the ordinance, or whether it was a part of the ordinance that wasn't understood or enforced at the time, I guess I couldn't speak to that.
Shiner's parking lot is all gravel.
Yep.
Well, the north, the north part of it is.
Car dealers got cars parked on gravel.
No, they got hard surface here.
So I haven't been watching your reaction to this part of the discussion. Do the neighbors feel like we're on the right path with this?
I think the hardest part for me is knowing if I ask for a variance for gravel driveway, you guys would laugh. No, would be the answer, no, uh-uh. So I know it's tough, 'cause I'm also a business owner. So I get it, I understand it, but I also don't understand it. It's, it was tough with Shiner's there, 'cause I was very careful to not work on my car after ten at night, but at one-thirty in the morning, had outside speakers facing the side of my house blaring music so loud, I'm calling 911 going, seriously, I mean, I can't run a jack out in front of my house.
So you're not opposed to it?
So it's tough, I mean, it's tough, I'm opposed, I'm not opposed. There's half of me that doesn't want, you know-
You're conflicted.
I'm conflicted, because we don't get to do any of this, but all this stuff is, you know, the very, so again, I wouldn't wanna be him. I wouldn't wanna have to pave it all of a sudden, you know, but I can't do it, so it's tough for me as a homeowner.
Well, actually, a residential property can have a gravel driveway.
I believe that's true.
We don't see it that often, but- Okay. I, I'm sorry, I really should have you come up here for the record. I let him get away with it. I gotta draw the line now. That's it.
A general question, will the audience, public have an opportunity to do, address the council and talk about some of these points as we go along? Or is this something which happened now, should we wait until you reach a motion point?
I've opened the door for that, if you have a couple quick comments, we'll listen to them.
First of all, you've put a lot of thought into it, it's good to see that. Pretty much everything you've discussed and said, yeah, that's what I'm gonna do, that's what I'm gonna do, that's what I would like to see in the condition of use permit. I've got about this many vehicles, that's what I'd like to have. I have so many limos, that's what I'd, I'd like to have that all in the CUP. So today, we're talking about three of this, and tomorrow, we're not saying, by the way, you got forty-two of them there, what happened? No, if your business goes that well, that would be wonderful. So signage and inspection are tied together. Again, you're getting painted with a brush of other businesses that aren't really good. But if the city council or other people aren't allowed to inspect, I have a concern. I notify the council, he recognizes, oops, I did wrong. By the time the council gets there, the ill deeds are gone.
That would be awesome.
Wouldn't it be?
It never happens that way.
Well, I'm looking again, other businesses that have signs up repeatedly blowing, blowed-up foxes or things like that. I'm waiting for one of the car dealers to have a gorilla next to me.
So you'd prefer to see more specificity?
Well, just that, the inspection with notice, I'm not real comfortable with that, that should, what sort of a notice do you have to have, is that two weeks, two months, a year and a half? An hour's worth of notice, what, what do you wanna have for that notice with inspection? The signage is planned, looks wonderful, no signage is really nice. Hours of operation, you've covered that. I'd like to have it specifically stated, some kind of a statement about auto sales. I live next to an auto dealer, I'm not real comfortable with that. I like to have the city not have too many more of those around. Number of vehicles total, that should be controlled by the amount of pervious space, impervious space. I'd like to have something about idling time specifically addressed, 'cause I recognize in a business, there's times when Joe goes to a coffee, then he's called off somewhere else, and the vehicle sits there and idles for the next six hours. I'd like to have the city have some input on that. I recognize you don't wanna do that, it wastes fuel and a lot of other things.
I was gonna say, that won't happen.
Okay, great, then put that in the CUP, that'd be great. Vehicle maintenance, you change your oil, I'm glad to see you're maintaining your stuff, so you don't go to heck. What do you plan to use for heating plants? Some places use their waste oil for heating.
No, it's gonna be words bone, so in-floor heat, it'll be a point of gas.
Direct your comments to the council, though, please, sir.
I'm sorry, okay. Comment on the species of trees? You proposed a single species, as we've learned with Admiral Dash Bore, it's probably better to have a mix of tree species rather than predominantly one. You've talked about storage material near the property or on the property. That implies perhaps loading and unloading. If it's on your vehicle, to me, that's not storage. If it's put onto the ground for storage, that's storage, then you gotta have either a guy out there with a shovel, which is really expensive, or you're running Bobcats to move things around. On the water management plan, this is probably for the engineer who's sneaking out, what sort of a rainfall event are we using for doing that? We see that there's increasing rainfall, so are we using a fifty-year or whatever the terms are for those?
Typically a hundred-year, isn't it?
Well, for rain gardens, they're sized for a one-point-one-inch event over the impervious surface, so it's a different method of calculating.
Okay.
They have to control the runoff from the hundred-year in a, in a manner that doesn't impact their neighbors. But in other words, the emergency overflow to the county ditch system or that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you. And I guess that's about all I got now, thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to make a quick comment? Okay. Further council comment? We did talk about whether or not we would like to see, you know, kind of a closeout of the grading and installation of the rain gardens? If we wanna ask John to go down there for just a walk-through to make sure that that all occurred according to plan?
I think we should do that.
Oh, yeah, I definitely agree, but that would be the applicant's expense, correct?
Yeah, it'd be an hour, another hour of the engineer's time.
Did we ever finish the, excuse me, did we ever finish the subject of asphalt here?
No, we didn't, other than the recommendation that Randy had made, and there seemed to be a bit of a consensus, but we didn't memorialize that or change that. And maybe now's the time to ask that question with John out of the room. I do think it's reasonable that it would be a condition of our, whether it's our license or our permit for the area over the public right-of-way. If it's not gonna be a requirement on his property, I don't know if we can do that as a condition, or if we have to take it through the variance process. Kim, do you have a feeling?
Should we pave?
Yeah. 'Cause he's indicating our ordinance, that's a requirement within our ordinance.
Well, Mayor and councilmembers, a variance is typically tied to some sort of hardship by state law.
Correct.
I think the council absolutely has the discretion to put in some different conditions that address the issue of paving. I've seen it happen before without a variance.
So you're comfortable that we could make that a condition within the resolution?
I am, as I have seen it by many councils.
Well, from a time and cost and brain damage point of view, I'd prefer to do it that way myself. So that would be a condition, as Randy had suggested, that the area from Second Street to the southeast corner of applicant's property, that that would be paved at a width of sixteen feet. Is that correct, Randy?
Uh, it says fourteen here.
Fourteen feet.
It says fourteen on the plan, it says, you know, we got-
Whatever, John, how wide is the driveway there at, on Second Street? Fourteen, sixteen?
I think, I think the one I had reviewed early for this memo must've said sixteen feet, or I had a typo. The one that is in your packet for tonight says fourteen feet.
Do you think fourteen gets it done?
It, it's probably tight up around that curve, and he's probably gonna have to flare out at, at Second Street a little bit to get his vehicles in there without running off the edge.
Well, I guess we're looking at just the main trunk coming from here to here, fourteen feet. He might have to adjust it on the north end by, once the building's there.
Yeah, yeah, fourteen is probably all-
You are gonna need to flare it where it connects to Second.
Correct, yes.
I guess I, just running the numbers, and I don't know how deep Mr. Roby's lot is, how deep is your lot? Do you know offhand, is it a hundred and forty feet? I can't really tell.
My fence line goes right up to the end of the proposal.
No, but do you know how big your lot is, how deep?
No, that's what I don't know, I don't have enough hand, no.
You know, we're looking at the hidden expense that he didn't plan on having, you know? Roughly, if he does everything, he's looking at nine to ten thousand square feet of hard surface.
Yeah.
On the whole project, if, you know?
Just eyeballing it, I'd say you're about a hundred to a hundred and twenty feet deep.
Yeah, so if it's a hundred and twenty, I was looking at seventeen hundred square feet of hard surface I'd need to put down.
Can you live with that?
I guess my question, so I'm responsible to pave the property from Second Street to my property line. But from my property line-
Gravel.
To the building can be- But from my property line to the building can be gravel?
Yes.
Forever or just for now?
Well, we're making it as a condition of, we're putting it in the resolution or CUP, so we could state either. But I thought after our discussion, we were okay with it being at his discretion when he.
Does the northern part?
Do you ever see putting any other hard surface down, down the road? Or had you, or no?
Honestly, no. I didn't, I didn't even, you know, plan on doing, you know, from the road to my property line. I didn't know that until like a week ago is when, when I found that out, so.
I guess I have a question you might know from experience. Well, with, with the class five, you'd still get runoff. So is that gonna damage the rain gardens and the pond or will that?
No, when.
Will you get too much sediment in there if it was a hard surface or not?
Look like he had grass between.
Yeah, there'll be some filtration in between there. And like I said, I probably built maybe thirty or forty rain gardens in my life. And we do it by an engineered plan. And we know where to get the, you know, proper materials and stuff like that.
What I'm saying is, you know, I know we have to do the ponds and that, but I don't want to see you go through the expense of putting all that stuff in and having class five and just that wipes it all out.
Well.
You know.
What.
You'll be fine.
Right, my plan was to have all clean rock, no minus in there. So the water's not gonna go this way, it's gonna go this way. And then there's still gonna be a filtration in between the driveway, parking lot, so to speak, and any outside, you know, the rain garden and stuff like that, there'll be sod in between all that.
How do you clean rock?
It doesn't have fines.
Yeah, it doesn't have any minus in it, so.
The memory roads, are you putting in glass?
No, it, it's irregular rock, so it locks together, it's all compacted. So with the new patios and stuff like that.
As long as you give them notice, you can go down there and.
I'm giving you notice.
It's similar to, it's a gravel, it's just that it doesn't have the fines.
Limestone, lime rock, lime rock, yep.
Like a class five. You are pushing it, no. Yeah, no, no. Did his explanation cover it?
Yeah, it's exactly opposite what I, what I just heard, so. I'm a limestone guy, I ran for Bardstone for eighteen years, so. That turns to dust when you remember it, so it's limestone.
But when it comes out, when it comes out of the truck, it's without fines. It will break down over time.
Anything will.
Yeah.
I mean, I can top dress it with a St. Cloud granite or a, you know, a trap rock, something harder if I need to.
Give some thought to it, we're gonna leave that to your discretion. I mean, I think the primary concern, if I were a neighbor, would be dust.
Right.
I see that being fairly minimal, something that you can mitigate.
So we're gonna just do the first part then?
Yeah.
I can live with that. And if these folks got an issue, they can come back and we'll have a, you know, they complain and then we have to look at it.
Well, we wouldn't be able to look at it frankly, not if it's, if it's approved this way, we're not able to revisit it and change the conditions. I just want to manage expectations. If it's a problem, you know, there, a discussion can take place, but I don't know that we have any authority, if we've approved it here this evening, to change our position.
Mayor and council members, I will add to that, that I had changed number eleven for the discussion with proper notice. Applicant agrees, city engineer may conduct site visit for purpose of inspections.
City engineer or staff, or city staff?
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest council members, but that is entirely different from zoning enforcement.
Right.
Yeah.
If there's a zoning violation, you have authority to.
Yeah, and you do not need permission for that. And complaints are submitted to the city and complaints are definitely checked out, so.
Yep.
Just wanted to make that clear.
John, any thoughts? You like the direction we're headed?
I do.
I'm good.
Tim?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, well, we have a resolution with changes that we've made.
Were those changes on the asphalt actually incorporated in a certain number? Yes, should that be like number seventeen or eighteen or something?
I think we've got number sixteen.
You have it as sixteen? Okay.
And I would tell Mayor and council members, I would suggest that the resolution, if in fact approved, the motion would be to approve it as revised.
Yes.
With all the notes here. I do have one clarification, was the area from Second Street to the southeast corner paved at a width of fourteen or sixteen?
Fourteen.
Okay, thank you.
Did you read sixteen as you, as you written it down?
Area from Second Street to southeast corner is paved at a width of fourteen feet.
And nothing about the gravel on the property itself?
So from Second Street to the southeastern corner of the property. So basically on city right-of-way. And I, I think to close the loop, at some point, we're gonna have to create a license agreement, I think was the recommendation of Mr. Magnuson, for the ingress egress through that area. So we will need to close that loop, okay?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I guess one thing we should look at is, you know, the elevation of that street, you know, and the grading after the blacktop, to be sensitive to the neighbors' properties.
John, is that part of the grading plan or installation?
Where do they have?
Let me look here.
So what I'm asking is, they're not gonna, you know, go from the center of the street and grade out seventeen and a half or sixteen and a half feet on each side? They're gonna keep up to a minimum on the grading?
I'm not sure I'm following your question. I mean, when they install a fourteen-foot wide road, they'll, they'll grade, but I would assume it would be to the plan that was reviewed by.
Yeah, so the grading plan doesn't go all the way to the street. It stops at their south property line. It was understood that the.
I guess I'm looking at the street, the street area.
This is gonna remain at about the same grade as it is now.
John, I think that's a detail, because from memory, Second sits a little bit higher and then things start to taper to the north. So could you provide some input? Not now, but, you know, prior to the issuance of a permit? Just provide a little direction on the right way to do that?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Is anybody willing to move resolution number twenty-eighteen dash oh-six as amended with the conditions of the engineer's comments as well?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion? Kim, you and I disagree on this one. I like to do it by roll call, will you do it by roll call?
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop? Councilmember, Councilmember Kopeski?
Yes.
Mayor Zeller?
Yes. Welcome, I know it took a long time to get there and I hope that you're successful and I hope that you and your neighbors have a great relationship, I sincerely do. Okay? Thank you. We'll move on to item B, consideration of resolution number twenty-eighteen dash oh-seven, preliminary budget and levy. We had significant discussion in our workshop prior to the meeting. There is a blank in resolution twenty-eighteen dash oh-seven. Based on our conversation, that blank would be filled in to be one-hundred-fifty-six-thousand-six-hundred-sixty dollars, which is a two-point-one percent increase. And I would move that resolution, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion?
You don't want to stay?
Okay, we'll call for a vote, we do roll call?
Of course. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Councilmember Kopeski?
Yes.
Mayor Zeller?
Yes. Item four is consideration of proposal for legal services. Mr. Magnuson is at a point in his life where he is retiring and has given notice that he won't be able to provide services for us moving forward. I have a number of relationships in the valley here with law firms that provide legal services for municipalities and, and frankly, I think there's some value to us having legal representation that doesn't currently represent neighboring or adjoining communities. Not that we're gonna get into an adversarial, it just, it just eliminates that conflict. So a couple of those firms, I approached and said, "I don't like the idea of hiring you, who should we hire?" And this gentleman came recommended to me. I had a conversation with him and I asked him to connect with Kim. And Kim reached out to him and this is very similar to what our current agreement is. Is that accurate, Kim?
I believe so, Mayor and council members. I did speak with him before he sent the proposal out, let him know that it's very clear that this is kind of as-needed basis, request of the council. In terms of the dollar amount, I'm not sure if that's similar to your last city attorney or not.
I can tell you, I wish that that was what I was paying for legal fees. It's a pretty favorable rate. Would you agree, John? One forty and one twenty?
I think most people were charging that about fifteen years ago.
Right.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Maggie was a two and a quarter.
Yeah. So, I mean, I recognize that we've not met this gentleman, frankly, I haven't met this gentleman. I had a couple of conversations with him. The fact that he came highly recommended to me means probably more than if he was here smiling at us, telling us he wanted his business. It's an option for us.
From what you said, Kim, he does recognize that in, as with everything we do in this town, the less we use them, the more we appreciate them?
I didn't, I didn't put it to him like that, but I did tell him we're on a very, very tight budget and that, you know, his services are, are limited. His need for services are limited. So I've told him what we've spent historically, so he's got a reasonable expectation of the level of involvement he'd have with us.
So does he do other cities?
I can't imagine this is his day job, that he would make his sole.
It's not unusual for municipal firms to offer a lower rate to cities.
No, but I mean, as far as he would only have this.
Oh, right, no, no.
No, but I'm saying, does he represent other cities? He could do other law.
That's my understanding, I don't recall who, but yes, that's my understanding. So, I mean, if you'd like to meet with him or if you'd like to have a conversation with him or we do need a lawyer.
Have you, you have, you have not met him?
I've not met him, I've had several phone conversations with him.
Are you comfortable with?
One hundred percent because of who referred him to me.
Mayor and council members, I will add that killing lemons is well-known and I've had several other conversations. He also came very highly recommended. And now when I look clearly at the, the fees for not only the, your civil but the prosecution, that is a very good rate. Typically prosecutions are billed on a monthly fee, so a hundred dollars per hour, I think you're getting a great deal on that.
And I look under civil, under the civil compensation and you go down to, oh God, I guess that's number C, that they're gonna keep their billing rate stable for the next three years. And then you go to number three, it's an at-will agreement. So if we do find out he's not what we want, we can count anyway.
Exactly.
So, yeah, that's fine.
Kim, do you think we need a motion to accept that proposal?
Uh, Mayor and council members, I absolutely would like a motion to approve this proposal.
What are your thoughts? It'd be nice to meet him sometime.
Mayor and council members, I will add that the county has already reached out in terms of some prosecutions about who the city attorney is. We had some work that needed to be done with that right-of-way and getting that recorded, the easement agreement. He basically has retired, so I would recommend that you approve this. We can certainly get him out at some point in time.
If it doesn't work out, we'll find someone else. I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal.
A second motion.
Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. We'll move into staff updates. John, we're keeping you along here tonight.
Mayor, I don't have anything further to report. If there are any questions from counsel, I could be, I'd be glad to respond to them at this time.
So the, the one item that I think we need your help on, John, is regarding our, our water service. Everyone knows, we get our water through a joint powers agreement from the city of Lakeland. And there've been a handful of reports over a period of time about some brown water. And there've been a couple of questions about that. We've had a couple of meetings with the city of Lakeland and for whatever reason, it seems to be a little bit of a tenuous relationship and I'd prefer it not be, but it, it is. I have some concerns and I reviewed the joint powers agreement. One of the provisions in there allows for the creation of a water board or a water advisory board. And that's something that I personally think that we should pursue. The other immediate question is, my only concern is wanting to confirm that the water is, passes the standards and that it's safe. And not knowing anything about water, I can't answer that question other than, you know, the same as anyone else. So are there some options for us to consider if we wanted to test the water ourselves from time to time, just so that we can be a hundred percent convinced that, you know, these minor flare-ups that occur as a result of flushing a hydrant or something of that nature are very limited and that the water quality itself isn't an issue? I guess I'm just looking for irrational, unemotional, what should we do so that we're assured that there's not an issue?
Sure. Well, Mayor, could, a few things come to mind, I guess now. I spoke with, to be candid with counsel, I did speak with you earlier today. We talked about a few things.
Yeah, I didn't want to cut you off.
And I didn't, I'm just coming back from some personal leave, so I haven't had a lot of time to dig yet into the specifics. But a couple of things that come to mind are, you know, one, to, you know, first make an attempt to work with the Lakeland Water Utility Operators, to get records on what testing's being done and what flushing is being done and where, what part of the cities and dates and things like that, and see if they correlate, if the flushing patterns correlate to where the water quality complaints are coming from. If, if the testing isn't being done in the, in the areas that give the council peace of mind, in other words, maybe they're testing down here in Lake St. Croix Beach or they're testing a little further north in the system, then the city of Lakeland Shores could engage a testing firm to do some, some testing or engage a neighboring community, which the mayor asked about potentially, to see if neighboring community would be willing to come down and take some, some water samples specifically in Lakeland Shores. That would be an option, maybe do some testing that way as well. I'm not, I did make an attempt to try and get on that website where you said that some of those complaints were being cited and I, I was unsuccessful. There's a registration process and before you know it, they wanted my cell phone number and I wasn't.
You weren't comfortable?
Gonna go that far yet. So I wasn't able to get dates of that, but maybe we can, you know, find another way around getting that information. We really need to be able to correlate the flushing, the flushing schedule with the brown water, the water quality complaints. Make sure, you know, if they, if they correlate, generally, we say that's not a concern in terms of the safety of the water. I mean, the turbidity in the water doesn't necessarily point to a health, safety. I mean, the turbidity in the water doesn't necessarily point to a health, safety issue.
Right.
And I think folks have probably experienced this in the past. As we know, Lakeland has changed a little bit about how they're administering their water department over the past couple of years. It could be that the group of operators they have now are doing the flushing at different times of the year, or at staggered times, maybe the other, the previous group was doing it all at once, twice a year, or something like that. So, I think collecting information is still going to be an important part of getting at some of your concerns, to see if we can eliminate some of the things before we're spending money on testing. But, but it's your discretion, you know? I mean, if you, if you really feel comfortable, some of those tests really don't cost that much. If you can get the samples collected, you know, they're only a few hundred dollars to do those tests, so...
I'm looking for the path of least resistance. And in the past, when I've asked sincere questions or expressed concerns, I've felt like the response was defensive and/or aggressive. And I don't know where that's coming from, but, you know, we had a workshop that started off very adversarial and by the end of the workshop, I felt like we'd had a really productive workshop. But then one another question or issue pops up. So, I don't want to have an adversarial relationship, you know? I'm thankful that we have the water system. I do think that, that a water review board would actually be good for everyone, because I think there'd be better communication there. I think there would be a layer of insulation there between the day-to-day operator and the community. So, I think we could formally request that, may get traction, may not. But frankly, if, if we just did a couple of random tests and asked our, a neighboring community to do it, and I guess I'm thinking more Hudson than I am Bayport, I'd sleep better, is the reality.
So, when you say they, so they go to some residents and take samples, or...
Right.
We'd probably provide samples.
Yeah. So, I would say, as, as an engineer, the first, the best option is for somebody who is trained to take the samples. I mean, it's not rocket science, but you want to make sure that the, that the containers are not contaminated, that the hands of the person taking the sample isn't contaminating. You'll say, there's somebody that shouldn't know some of that protocol. That said, if you do collect them yourself and send it in, and the samples come back clean, you've got the information you need as well. It's just a matter of, if they don't come back clean and somebody wasn't careful about how they took the samples...
Well, they put it in a bag, a coke can.
Maybe a false, maybe a false, you know...
Right.
So...
Well, I guess my next question is, how often are they required to test it?
You know, I wish I could tell you, it's a lot more frequently than, than you realize, but the testing schedule, as I understand it, there might even be some daily requirements after all houses.
My understanding is they are doing bench sampling and testing daily. There's a log kept. They're required to submit results, I think, once a month to the Department of Health that reviews the report that's submitted, but, but they put the majority of the responsibility and the onus on the licensed operator, on whoever holds that license. But I think, and I don't know this for sure, but I think currently, the licensed operator for the water system is a contract through a company called Peoples. So, they're not onsite on a day-to-day basis and they don't have to be. They're ultimately responsible for the system and for the reporting, but they're not...
Doing the sample.
They're not necessarily the one doing the testing, or even providing the test results, or operating the system on a daily basis.
So, the one thing I'd add to that, Mayor, is that when I was more intimately familiar with, and I was never intimately familiar with those, that, those details, but when I was more connected with their staff...
Right.
Couple of years back, there's also a schedule of independent third-party testing that happens with the water as well. I don't, I don't think it's that same, it's not that same frequency whether, you know, daily. I don't, I don't remember if it's monthly, if it's quarterly, what it is. There's a, there's an interval that I believe a third party comes and does that.
I asked that question specifically and I was told that that wasn't the case, no.
Okay, well, we might need to follow up to verify that.
It just seems to me that if it's being tested already, I'm not suggesting the daily testing results, but if somebody, a third party is coming in and testing it, we ought to be entitled to get the results of those tests.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, to read at least what they, I mean, you would think that...
Then we wouldn't need to test.
They would tell, right. They would tell us, you know, exactly what's in the water and what parts per millions are, you know, good for you or bad for you, or whatever it is.
We're not getting those results now?
No.
No, we never get anything.
Well, we just get, usually they send out, well, they used to send out a letter or something that...
Kind of an annual report.
Yeah, it meets standard quality, though. Yeah, it's nothing...
Did they, did we switch over to a new system now? Or they...
I'm not sure. You mean, like, they're...
They were switching from a more chlorine-based to a more potassium, dah dah dah.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I think that's where we need to start before we start doing our own testing, is find out whether there are third-party tests being done, or whether they're required to be done, and whether they are being done. And then, you know, find out what they actually say.
I know when Brian and I were in the workshop, we asked about that testing and, well, where's the results maintained? And we didn't know the secret handshake, obviously, because they weren't going to tell us what it was.
I know they keep a log at, but, but again, that test is, you know, you've got one individual doing that test and it comes down to, so, I know I'm not the person to ask the question and I'm not trying to put you in a difficult spot, but as I was seeing those posts, you know, occur over a period of two-plus weeks, you know, I'm asking myself, what's my responsibility here as a representative to, to at the very least, to ask and to be confident that the answer is what it needs to be? So, it just, I got outside my comfort zone on that.
Well, and I would encourage anybody who's experiencing water quality issues, or they have questions or concerns, you know, posting to a website like that is fine maybe for venting, but it doesn't achieve a lot. They should be calling the Lakeland Water Utility and reporting, and the Water Utility would want to know, I would think. And in fact, I'm confident they would want to know about those complaints, because if they've got a cluster of them that they otherwise couldn't explain with hydrant flushing, they'd want to know that they've got something going on in the system there.
And it's my understanding that that does happen, so that it isn't anything unique or beyond the ordinary, it just, it starts to raise a level of, you know, concern, is all.
Is, there is a, somebody that would be over the Lakeland Water Utility with the next level up, probably not quite yet to the state, maybe the county? No, we don't know that either.
It's the licensed operator and then the Department of Health.
Then goes right to the state. Okay. All right, that's, all right.
But even the Department of Health is relatively hands-off. The majority of the responsibility is placed and entrusted to the licensed operator.
They're almost an auditor at that point. You, they, you send your results to the state.
But I mean, if there's a complaint, then we would, that would be elevated.
If there's a complaint, frankly, I don't know that the Department of Health would do anything.
Oh, geez.
I don't know that.
All right, I don't know. That's interesting.
But, you know, they generally say, contact your licensed operator.
Got it.
And most jurisdictions have their own, so then they, you know, they go to the mayor and you, where we aren't in charge of our own.
That's right.
Right.
And I'm not suggesting that we'd be in charge.
No.
If they were agreeable to forming, I would suggest that it's an advisory board that, you know, makes their recommendations to the Lakeland Council. Lakeland owns that system, you know, they maintain that system. I don't, I'm not trying to take any control from them. It would be an advisory board that's just, you know...
Checks and balances.
Yes.
And then, and I just have one more thing. We, we've talked about a little bit about fire hydrant flushing, that's kind of water quality. Do we know when our hydrants were last flushed?
They're doing it now. That's why this brown water's popping up.
They did mine like ten days ago.
Got it, okay.
I can't remember how many there are, it's shocking. There's like almost four hundred, so it does take...
Four hundred hydrants in Lakeland Shores?
No, in the whole system.
Oh, no, oh, got it.
It's something like that. It's between three and four hundred, so...
Ooh, wow.
It takes a while. It takes a while.
Well, I'd like to know, wouldn't that, so, you know, take it to the next level, wouldn't it be neat to be able to know, have, and the city of Lakeland is doing the flushing, right, Mayor? Wouldn't it be great for them to say that we've done yours throughout this period of time, where they may not even tell us that?
I think that's what we're talking about, Randy. I agree with you a hundred percent. You know, the problem is, we have no communication with the water people that are in charge of it. They don't give us any information as to test results, they don't give us anything, okay? And we're just supposed to accept the fact that what they're doing is, I guess, the way it's supposed to be done. And sometimes I wonder considering, well, I can go there, it's on the record, but you know, sometimes I wonder, you know, whether we should have that much faith, okay?
Correct.
And I would, I would like to at least have some, you know, reporting to us that the water system, you know, why, why we are, you know, how often it's being, not how often it's being tested, but if there's a third-party person testing it, I would love to see the results of it. I'm just curious as to what's in the water, you know, more than anything else. Doesn't have to be bad or anything, just...
Exactly. This day and age with a computer, you know, they test it, they punch in a score or whatever, a reading, and it's documented. You know, they do it twice a day or every day, it's all there, you know?
John, could you find out how often the system is inspected and/or tested by a third party?
Okay.
And, and a third party is not a contract, it's not a contract vendor. Is that fair?
Right.
Yeah. So, I don't want to hear that the licensed contract, licensed contractor, you know, is there every week. I don't want to hear that. I want to see how often is a neutral third-party inspection or water test.
And by law, they're supposed to have that.
I don't know that, to be the fact.
Oh, you don't know?
We did have a meeting, and I guess this will be my segue. We did have a meeting today with the Minnesota Department of Health and Minnesota Pollution Control. Lakeland hosted the meeting, I attended. The staff wanted to make us aware, our city aware, that, you know, for years, they've been doing TCE testing and that's specific to raised truck stop.
Yep.
That's kind of winding down. They've, they've identified three plume areas and this is a map showing which private wells are being tested or have been tested. It sounded to me like that's winding down. There's a different type of pollutant, PFAS and VOC sampling, and that is specific to three dump sites within the county that 3M in particular was dumping some material into and that's impacted our neighboring communities much more significantly. I do know that the MPCA did do a test of the Lakeland Water System at the request of Lakeland and that the results came back positive. So, there was, there's not a concern with our, with the city wells specific to this PFAS. But they're going to be out testing for PFAS and that may alarm some people, because this is a new pollutant that they haven't, they haven't tested for before, and they're going to be out testing it. We would be on the outer, outermost edge of the plume area, but they want to, they want to confirm that.
But I can, excuse me, Tom, I can tell you that the house I used to live on, on Indian Trail in Afton, has, their well, the well I sold it six years, is now compromised, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
And that plume is coming across there, going down towards Lake Edith and going north of Lake Edith.
Exactly.
And it's still, it's still...
Still migrating.
Gravitating, put it that way.
Yep.
Okay, so who knows, you know?
I know when I had my well tested, well, this was what, seven, eight years ago?
Yeah.
The standards had changed.
Yeah, absolutely.
It went from six parts per million to point six, which is dramatic, but, and I was kind of dovetailing into, are they going to use that? Because I got a phone call and they wanted to know, they asked permission to test my well and I said, "What do you need?" Just access to your hose and that's that. So, I assume they're going to be probably doing the same type of thing.
They've assured me they will not be in town wearing hazmat equipment.
Okay.
But know that letters are going out and people may ask, okay?
Brian, before, before we move on, can, would it be okay, you asked John to take a peek at, you know, the water quality, this and that, would you be wanting, John, would it be okay for John to at least ask about the fire hydrant flushing and when that's been done and, you know, get a little information on that for us?
Uh, yeah. John, you mind taking a run at that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do we want to formally request that the city of Lakeland form a water advisory board?
Let's see what their reaction is to John's inquiries.
Okay. I can live with that. Okay. Anything else, John?
No, nothing else, Mayor.
Kim?
Mayor and council members, I have nothing for you this evening.
All right.
Good for talking.
A couple of fast things. Bike trail, there was another meeting to discuss the winter maintenance of the bike trail. Five communities were there. Washington County was the one that spearheaded the meeting. It was hosted at Lakeland.
When was it?
Oh, week and a half ago.
I didn't know anything about it. All right.
So, Lakeland is very concerned and wants to plow their trail in the winter. Previously, it was all five cities had to agree, or no one could do it. The county clarified that position and said Lakeland can do it if they want to do it. So, Lakeland is interested in plowing from the school up effectively to 94 and I reminded them that a significant portion of that was Lakeland Shores. So, I believe it's their intent that they're going to plow the trail where it's clearly in Lakeland. I didn't think there was support from Lakeland Shores to incur that cost or that level of commitment to it. So, Lakeland's concerned about it and some area citizens that are on that board that kind of spearheaded the effort to get it repaved. I personally think it's more of an enforcement issue. The damage is being done by people that ride with studs and studs aren't permitted on the trail anyway. So, if we could, you know, work on an education component and just our regular duty car, if they're, you know, able to observe the studs and you can do that from a distance, that, you know, those people be cited. So, the sheriff and sheriff's representatives weren't able to attend our meeting, but I think that's a follow-up issue for us.
Why does Lakeland want to plow it?
Um, you know, there's, well, candidly, I think Mayor Glasgow just feels strongly that, that they need to plow it and that, you know, it's going to keep the, he feels that snowmobiles are going too fast, he feels that there are times when alcohol's involved as well and that that's a dangerous situation and he feels like it's a safety issue for kids coming and going on that path. Were the comments that he shared with us, as well as degrading the path that was just recently improved, so that, that's, those are his feelings.
May I inquire as to what the other three cities' position is?
Uh, there didn't seem to be support for them to do it.
Thank you.
You know, I mean, my feeling is, you plow that and now all of a sudden, you're creating hard edges and you're going to have snow melt and now it's going to pool and, you know, I, I think you're almost making a, a dangerous situation more dangerous. If you're going to commit to keeping that clear and... If you're going to commit to keeping that clear and, and plowed, it's going to take an awful lot of effort, and it's not going to prevent, in my opinion, the wildcatters that are causing the problem. They're still going to jump back and forth over that path, and they're going to cross the intersections there. I, it snows, they're going to go on it.
They're going to heat it, because I didn't have only three inches of ice on my driveway this wintertime, so that's what, they'll be a little heated, and then it'll be all nice and clean for them. That's going to be a nightmare, because it's going to get all iced up. Well, anyway.
So I shared the bike trail, MPCA, the last item, I received notice that the tax assessor's coming again, so I reached out to him to say how much of Lakeland Shores is being reviewed. They indicated approximately 30 homes, and they wouldn't say all the homes on the river, but they said primarily the homes on the river, and that's approximately 30 homes. So I, I think it's pretty fair to say that all of the riverfront-
So you boxed them in there, huh?
All the riverfront properties are going to be tax assessed, the assessor's going to reach out to you, and they're going to tell you that they need to come into your house, and I guess that's for you to decide if you're letting them in or not.
So we can lower our levy for next year.
So that's all I have. Mayor Kapeski, or, sorry, Councilmember Kapeski?
No special report, Mayor, thank you.
I just have one thing on Division Street, on the dead end, by the end of the street, there's a pile of brush, and I don't know if that homeowner occurred that, or if that was somebody that did some fresh cleaning on it.
This is, this is the stub that they, they blocked off.
It looks like there's going to be a bomb.
Yeah, there's a huge pile of brush, and it's been there a while, and I, you know, I was on vacation, then I came back, and it's been there, and I'm, I don't know. Do you know anything about it, John?
He said I was just up there today, filling a hole up on Division Court, and I missed a toe.
Well, it's on the other end, it's down, right down by the bike trail.
Instead of going to the roundabout, go straight. Well, you could go through there, yeah, so I don't know. And I haven't seen them outside, so.
Who do you think cut it?
I, no clue.
I have no idea.
We thought, Tim and I discussed the county, but then it's been sitting there for-
Yeah.
It's been there for a month.
Yeah.
And, and-
It's a lot.
Yeah.
It's a couple pickup loads, for sure.
And it's a very well-done pile, it's very pretty.
So does someone want to knock on a door or two up there? If I see Brian out, I'll stop by, but I was just wondering if-
I don't know anything about it, if I was here, and I'm not going to be around for the next, and the last dump, so I can't take care of it myself, so anybody could pick up.
No, we don't intend to have you take care of it. That's it. John?
Uh, John, can you tell us when they're going to start doing the seal cracking, whatever it is?
Yeah.
Crack seal.
Last I heard from them was mid-August, and they were planning to come in right after Labor Day, so I would expect that, we did get rain, you know, off and on the last couple of weeks, which has probably set them back a week or two, so I would expect that by the middle of the month, it should be done.
By the way, I have nothing additional.
Tom?
Uh, nothing dramatic on the fire department. I think we still have a couple open applications in place out there. We're still, I don't want to say we're shorthanded, we just need to top off the group, because it seems like we're losing a firefighter every eight months, for one reason or another, and-
Well, you don't accept older, overweight, uh-
No, but that 15-year-old of yours might be.
Yeah, okay, he'd probably like it, so that's not a bad idea.
Uh, that's it.
Thanks. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second your motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, that was way too long.